Neighbors first.
Well, who's the applicant?
In the back.
No, I know.
Well, we have petitioners.
Yeah, what the...
You want to read in the record first?
The Webster Citizens Board should be the appropriate land use. Yeah. They should be the applicant or so they should be in the first instance making their...
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want to read into the record before they speak on it?
CEA Fresh Farms Project at State Road. Petitioners Webster Where Open Space is Worth Preserving Incorporated and Webster Citizens for Appropriate Land Use are requesting an interpretation of the zoning code to determine if a proposed greenhouse farming operation is a permitted use in the large lot residential district under Section 225-108D1 and 225-108E sub 2 sub A of the Code of the Town of Webster in pursuant to Supreme Court Monroe County Court Order Index E 2019 011898, dated May 18, 2020.
Good evening.
State your name, please, and address, please.
My name is Tim Young. I live at 1019 Pathway Lane in Webster. Tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Webster Citizens for Appropriate Land Use, and I want to talk about the neighborhood and why we believe the town code does not allow this project as proposed. You all have this hard copy. And that's what I'll be speaking to.
Mr. Young, before we get underway...
Yes. Yeah, I can't tell if this one's on either.
Test, test, test. They're all on, okay. Thanks, Eric. Mr. Young, obviously, you know, under all circumstances, we want the record to be clear. But we want it to be particularly clear when we know there's an application that there's a great deal of interest in, which this one certainly has. So for the record purposes, it would be appreciated if, when you, for example, a moment ago, you referred to everyone has this record here or this document. To the extent that you can, please be specific when you're referring to a document, a photograph. So if this record is ultimately reviewed, whoever's reviewing it can be certain as to what matters you were referencing.
Okay.
All right, thank you. And so let's be clear before you get underway. You did pass a document out tonight. I think we already had it. But let's be clear as to what it is and how many pages it is and what it contains.
Okay. So this is a presentation on the CEA Grow Factory and why we feel it's inappropriate for the large lot residential district.
As I recall, this is a, this was a PowerPoint.
Correct.
Is that right? Which was not available to you tonight for other reasons.
Yeah.
So it's the PDF of the PowerPoint which you've put together.
Correct.
Okay.
It is 18 pages in total.
And the front page of the document is the, it's entitled, "CEA Grow Factory in Appropriate for LL Residential District." There's a photograph of a crop field, correct, on the first page?
That is correct.
Right, and then on the back page, there is a narrative summary.
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you.
And that's number page 18.
Okay, fantastic. What I'm, I think we're going to do too, just in case we need to, why don't we mark this as Webster Citizens Number One, okay? If there's other documents you want to submit or have us review, we'll mark them accordingly.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so on page two, the first address, the scale of this project is proposed at 2.37 million square feet of buildings. That's an equivalent of 66 football fields or 23 average-sized Wegman stores. And there is a diagram of the proposed project here so that you can see what the magnitude of it is. Page three, impacts of this project. This project proposes to develop farmland in a residential area for what is an industrial use. It's industrial because of the scale. An impact of this project is that of a factory. There are 23-foot-tall buildings, 33-foot-tall water towers, loading docks, packaging areas, a warehouse, offices, and a canteen or cafeteria area. This project is certainly of the magnitude that it bears the aesthetic resources and neighborhood character and is wholly inappropriate in a large lot residential district. Page four. So page four is basically a statement of the section of the town code for large lot residential. I know you all know this, but I would like to state this for people at home and for the record. Town code, Section 225-12, states, "The intent of the large lot zoning district is to encourage large lot residential development in areas where conditions of the environment, availability of utilities, and surrounding land use patterns dictate that residential densities and the amount of land covered by impervious surface remain low." And I want to address each of those five elements of that statement of intent. Page five, conditions of the environment. The current conditions of the environment in that area. There are 111 acres of prime farmland. This is according to a U.S. Department of Agriculture survey. It's currently a working farm. There is a tributary of Four Mile Creek that runs through the property and three acres of federally protected wetlands. What this project proposes to do is excavate 111 acres of prime farmland, remove over 10,000 cubic yards of U.S. Department of Agriculture highly productive soils from the site completely, impound 21.8 million gallons of rainwater that would normally flow in some way into that Four Mile Creek tributary, reroute the Four Mile Creek tributary, fill in the wetlands, and light pollution. CEA will tell you that they'll be deploying shades. However, if you look at the next two pages, six and seven, page six is a photograph of the Intergrow Tomato Factory in Ontario. That's taken from Tractor Supply parking lot across the street. And that was taken March 19th of this year. On page seven is the Intergrow Factory from two and a half miles away in a residential area. As you see, the houses there this past winter. Note, Intergrow has shades, but can using them be enforced? Page eight.
Mr. Young, can I question that for one second? The photographs that you referenced on page six and seven, are those photographs that you took? Or how do you, did you become aware that those were photographs of that location at the time that you indicated?
The one from March, I took that picture myself.
Number six?
Page six. And I'm not sure who took the picture on page seven, but it was sent to one of the neighbors adjacent to the property, and she forwarded it to me.
All right, thank you. Excuse me, can I have a hand now? My pages aren't lining up with what you're presenting this year.
Yeah, Chris...
Thank you.
Oh, never mind. All set.
I had a sit down.
Okay, page eight, availability of utilities. Based on a Cornell study and data from the National Center for Biotechnology Information, and this was performed by a professional engineer, that study or that calculation indicates 10 megawatts of electrical power will be required to provide artificial light for these grow houses 16 hours a day. That energy draw is the equivalent of 8,189 homes. It would require new transmission and distribution lines and would likely require a new power substation. The project requires installation of a 5,000-foot sewer line down State Road. Capacity of water line needs further study. We have done an analysis that is in conflict with CEA's analysis, so we feel that that needs further review. We don't believe that the capacity is there in the current water line. Page nine, surrounding land use patterns. This is a rural setting with a mix of large lot residential homes and traditional farming. Currently a working farm and surrounded by working farms. On page 10, there's a photograph of State Road looking east, just east of the intersection of State and Salt Road. I took this picture a couple days ago, and it's meant to depict the rural nature of the rural setting that will be significantly impacted. On page 11, there's a photograph of the western portion of the proposed project. Again, this was taken a couple days ago. As you see, it's a working farm field being prepped for planting. This is just to the west of the Kubrick property, which is sort of in the middle of this project. On page 12, there's a picture of the eastern end of the proposed project. Also, you can see it's a field that's been worked and prepped for seeding. Page 13, so the next two pages are to show the residential nature. So basically, on the south side of State Road is where this project is proposed. That's all working farmland with one property in the middle of it. And on the north side are homes, and those are depicted in these two slides, page 13 and 14. Again, for the record, I took these photos Friday, I think it was. Okay, on page 15, another impact to the neighborhood is the proposed vehicle traffic. CEA proposes 40 truck trips per day. These are tractor trailers. That would be the equivalent of one truck every 16 and 1/2 minutes. They have stated that the workday would be 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., an 11-hour workday. Additionally, they propose 299 employees coming and going each day. We presume one per car, which is the equivalent of 600 car trips per day. I don't know what the current traffic is on that section of State Road, but I know it's not that much. This will certainly impact the peace and quiet, which is typical of a traditionally rural large lot district. Additionally, this section of State Road has little or no paved shoulder. This is a significant risk to children walking to and waiting at bus stops on the very small shoulder of the road, particularly if visibility is low due to weather or darkness or roads are icy. This is also a common route for bicyclists, and that becomes a lot riskier with tractor trailers and 600 car trips with virtually no paved shoulder. Picture's worth a thousand words, so on page 16, this is the eastern end of the project, and you can see the shoulder of the road is quite narrow. There is basically no paved shoulder to the right of that fogline. And the only bailout area is in that ditch to the right. So this is a significant concern. Page 17, the conditions of the environment, availability of utilities, surrounding land use patterns, all dictate that densities remain low. This project is proposed to have 54 acres of buildings, which is 38 percent lot coverage, and the amount of land covered by impervious surface shall remain low. This project proposes paving and construction of 72 acres of impervious surfaces, combination of glass, concrete, asphalt, and rubber-lined ponds. That's more than 51 percent of the 141 acres. Page 18, in summary, this development would quite simply destroy the neighborhood, ruining its agricultural character and causing significant disruption to the daily lives of the surrounding residents. The conditions of the environment, availability of utilities, and surrounding land use patterns make the intent of this zoning district clear, and that intent should inform the board's interpretation of the disputed ordinances. And that's all I have to present. Okay?
Yep, we're going to thank you.
Thank you.
We have several people that want to speak, so we're going to let you folks do the talking.
Okay.
State your name and address, please.
Evening, everyone. My name is John Tantillo. I'm an attorney for Webster Citizens for Appropriate Land Use with Knopf Schott, Two State Street, Rochester. Before you tonight, here's an appeal of a determination by the town that the CEA Fresh Farms Project complies with the town's zoning code and does not require varicances. Specifically raised are appeals related to two issues, whether the project is a permitted use and whether the project runs afoul of the code's maximum lot coverage limit. I spoke with your attorney a couple times, and it sounds like he's keeping everyone pretty well informed here, so I'm going to assume we get general familiarity with the issues. But if anyone needs any clarification at any point, please do not hesitate to stop me and ask.
Mr. Tantillo, similarly with Mr. Delwan, at least we'd be clear as to the documents that you want to be sure that we have, if any, or those that you might be referring to. I think we have everything, but let's be clear on that.
I was not planning on referring to any documents, but the two most important ones, I think, are our two letters directly to this board from November of last year, dated November 18th and November 14th.
That's on the Knopf Schott letterhead.
Correct.
Okay, and all board members have that, correct?
Yes.
Mr. Noah, you have those?
I do not.
Okay, let's probably make sure that...
I have a couple copies.
He has those. I think I'll get an extra copy, too.
And I should also note that the November 14th letter does attach a report from the Town Webster Conservation Board related to the Intergrow Project dated... May 3rd, 2016? No, May 9th, 2016.
Thank you. Mr. Tantillo, thank you.
All right, I'd like to start with the lot coverage issue, which is, you know, obviously a bit more technical. So zoning code 225-73 is a supplemental code section that specifically governs agricultural uses. Its heading is simply that, agricultural uses. Now, the developer is claiming that the project is an agricultural use, so uncontroversially, Section 73 would apply if that was the case. So Section 73 has six separate subsections, and they're labeled A through F. For four out of six of those subsections, A, B, E, and F, it is undisputed that they apply to every aspect of the farm operation. Subsection C, however, is expressly limited to onsite residences for farm laborers. And it says so very clearly and succinctly right in the subsection. That's what it deals with. It's about onsite residences for farmhands, farm laborers. Subsection D contains no such language and says simply, "Except as herein above provided, all zoning provisions and restrictions as to single family, or as to single dwelling units of residential district R3 shall apply." So subsection D of zoning code 225-73, which is the agricultural use section, says the dimensional limits for R3, single-family residential uses, apply. Essentially, what this subsection recognizes is the fact that agricultural uses might find themselves located in, you know, all sorts of different neighborhoods in various towns. And to mitigate the impact those uses might have, the town made sure that the uniform dimensional regulations are applied to those uses. Now, what the developer wants this board to believe is that subsection D, without any reference to farm laborer residences, is limited in application to only farm laborer residences. No meaningful explanation is offered as to why D is treated differently from A, B, E, and F, because there's no reason that it should be. As relevant here, the project does not meet the lot coverage limitations under that interpretation. They would be limited to a 20 percent lot coverage, but the proposed use is double that, or roughly double that, it's 38 percent. So instead, the developer offers an interpretation that results in their project having absolutely no lot coverage limitation whatsoever. This self-serving interpretation would obviously lead to absurd results, as they're essentially claiming that they could build 100 acres of buildings with absolutely no regard to lot coverage. The Democrat in Chronicle read a story on this project about a week ago, and it had a pretty striking comparison in there. They pointed out that the square footage of this project is 20 times larger than a typical Loews or Home Depot. 20 times. Now, I think it's a fairly uncontroversial statement to say that any interpretation of the zoning code that allows a development of that magnitude to be dropped right in the middle of a residential neighborhood is an absurd result. And there's a rule in New York that when you're interpreting codes, you're supposed to avoid absurd results like that. Highlighting the absurdity is the purpose of the zoning district that the developer chose. They picked the large lot residential zoning district. And in the code, it specifically states that that district was created to keep impervious surfaces low. It's right there, the first subsection of the large lot residential zoning district. The purpose of this district, keep down impervious surfaces. Despite that fact, the developer's going to come in front of you guys and say, there's no limit on impervious surfaces. It's nonsensical as a starting point. The purpose statement is an interpretive aid that you guys are entirely within your rights to look at when interpreting this code provision. Now, I did have a chance to look at the developer's submission that was submitted ahead of this meeting, and I'd just briefly like to address a couple points that they raised. First, it would not be, as the developer claims...
And let me interrupt you, Mr. Tantillo.
Yes, yep, that's a point.
That's their submission, I think it's dated June 4th, was it?
June 4th.
June 4th, that's on the Woods Overhead letterhead. That's a four-page letter from Attorney Warren Rosenbaum, and then accompanying that is Exhibit A, which is a two-page letter from the New York State Agricultural Markets Office, right?
Correct. It would not be, as the developer claims, nonsensical to require agricultural uses to abide by the 20 percent lot coverage limit, because virtually all agricultural uses already do by their very nature. It's a low lot coverage use. Their arguments are largely non-sequiturs in this context. I don't want to say they're trying to confuse the issues, but they don't really address the points that are in front of you guys. The developer claims that there's some ambiguity here that needs to be interpreted in their favor, and it just unquickly is not ambiguous. There's no ambiguity in the provision. The developers are trying to manufacture ambiguity by attempting to read into this subsection language that just is not there. There's nothing in subsection D that says anything about onsite farm laborers. It's just not there. And for them to say that, oh, there's some ambiguity as to whether it applies to them, it's a manufactured issue. Finally, the developer claims that the common sense interpretation that we're offering would render the language as to, would render the language, quote, "as to single-family dwellings," superfluous. That is incorrect. I have another matter before this board last year. It was at Fast Track Cafe on Ridge Road. And the issue there was, there was this, you guys have this rule about buffers for residential uses in districts or where the district's a but non-residential district. And under that rule, residential uses are treated differently from commercial uses. You know, residents can go places that a commercial use can't. And that's just one example of how that language is not superfluous, because under this code, a residence would be treated differently in that area than a commercial use. So what the code is saying is, if there's a farm in a buffered area, then it could be treated as a residential use for purposes of that particular rule. That's all I'd like to say about the lot coverage issue or the agricultural use section issue. As to the permitted use, the developers referred you guys to a handful of outside agencies, and I want to really drive home the fact that those agencies' opinions have no bearing on your guys' decision. What the Webster Town Code and zoning code says is a decision for the Webster Zoning Board of Appeals, and what Ag and Market says does not have any bearing on how Webster's interpretation of the term agricultural use is decided. Zoning concerns the use of land, and the use of land here is industrial. From the outside, the project is, for all intents and purposes, a factory. And the fact that inside, the product they're developing is lettuce, has no bearing on whether or not this is an agricultural or industrial use. It's the land that we're concerned about here. For everyone around this building, whether or not they're manufacturing tables or spinach, it's going to look the same to them. That's not what zoning's about. To that end, the town included the word customary in Section 73, to which we're, that's a subsection F, customary agricultural operations or farming that are conducted in all zones. It's the word customary that we're trying to get you guys to give effect to tonight. Mr. Young, I've been talking about all the reasons that this isn't a customary farm use. This isn't going to impact the surrounding properties in the way all the farms that are already there do. It's a very cutting-edge, new technology that I think the state should address for local zoning codes like this are kind of interpreted after the fact to allow it. For these reasons, we're asking the board to find that the project is not a permitted use in the district and that the project runs afoul of the 20 percent lot coverage limit that does apply to it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Folks, have another speaker?
Actually, two things to me and Tim's evening time, so if you guys have any questions, we can...
Mr. Tantillo, I want to stand to vote here where I'm sure there are personal questions. Well, I have a question. When we, when we look at 225-73D, like data, and it references provisions, restrictions as to single dwelling units, is the code speaking to a proposed use that would include single-family dwelling units as opposed to what's being proposed here?
I think generally, a customary agricultural use will have some residential on it, so I think that's probably a reasonable thing to say, but I don't think that changes the fact that the project as a whole needs to comply with those dimensional restrictions.
Well, so what I'm trying to understand is that if the provision is about single-family, single-dwelling units, but the proposal here doesn't... but the proposal here doesn't include single-dwelling units?
Correct. Oh, no, I don't think, sorry. Subsection D is not limited to application to single-family dwelling units. It's saying that for anything that you're trying to build as an agricultural use, you need to comply with the dimensional restrictions that would be applicable for a single-family dwelling unit. And I mean, the fact that the project complies with all of them except for the lot coverage limitation, it shows that that does scale out to agricultural uses. It's just the atypical nature of this particular use that's putting up against it.
So I guess why do you believe that it applies in whole R3, given the fact that these are proposed as greenhouses?
Because that's, that's what the code said. It doesn't say anything to the contrary. It's saying, we recognize that these uses are going to find themselves in multiple zoning districts throughout the town. And as a way to impose some consistent regulation, here's the, here's the standard that's in the zoning code now that you guys should look to for determining what's permissible and what's not.
When we look at residential D3, it covers more applications, correct, than just the single-family units? Or are they, keep referring to the single-family, single-dwelling units?
Single-family.
Residential, residential D3? I'm sorry. Not sure what that's, what that's referring to. You mean the district? Right. Yeah, it's talking about the R3 zoning district. It's used those dimensional restrictions.
I guess, I guess I'm not understanding. The 22573 incorporates those provisions of the R3 single-family residential district relevant to separate residences.
Apply the dimensional restrictions of the R3 single-family district as they would apply to a single-family dwelling, is what the section is saying. So you've got buildings here, and R3 single-family dwellings are building there. They're both subject to the same dimensional restrictions.
See, the problem I have is that that file follows C, which refers to providing housing for farm laborers and farmhands, or members, actually, you know, family members actually engaged in doing work on a farm. And D refers to, as our attorney indicated, the single-family units. Well, and you're right, it doesn't provide distinction.
It doesn't.
But it follows some sort of logic. There again, my opinion.
Well, and my, the way I read it is typically when we have, the code indicates some, some set of requirements. And then if the next section beneath it is applicable for, in this distance, if I'm looking at C and the residences and the buildings for farmhands, if the next subset of instructions applies to C, it would be indented and then it would be C-1.
You're right.
As opposed, where, if I look at, I'm pulling up the large lot, Section 225-12, and the R3 single-family, and the R2 single-family, there, when it's, you know, the minimum yard needs to be this wide. And then if it's on a major highway, subset 1 is this. And corner lot, subset 2 is this. So I think they need to be, just as I would interpret it, they're separate, they're separate statements, not connected to each other.
That's actually a phenomenal point to the degree that I'm kicking myself for not raising it in my own letters. I shouldn't have put that before the court when we were discussing this before. And it should have been brought to you guys. That's exactly how a reliant section that, you know, builds on the section above it is drafted. And that's how your code is drafted. You have subsections upon subsections upon subsections. If this was meant to apply to only subsection C, farmhands residences, it would be subsection C1 instead of D.
Yeah, from an engineering perspective, core in this logic applies.
That's why I am an engineer.
But it appears also that the, they're distinguishing how farmhand residences were treated as apart from non-farmhand residences.
I don't understand why it wouldn't just be part of C in that case. It would just, even not, not even subsection C1, but just an additional sentence in subsection C. Subsection C contains, you know, limitations on those farmhand residences. Why they would, they break it out into its own separate subsection is unknown to me.
I think it's, I'll leave that up to the board's interpretation. But I think the types of residences that are being referred to in each one of those sections are different.
Could you sit down?
But are we discussing the residences? Or are we discussing the, the conditions that apply to the land use?
Correct. In other words, it mentions residences. It mentions residents, but does it apply to all conditions, including lot coverage? If they didn't put residences in there and just said, everything, and R3 applies to this, that would be crystal clear. But it's not exactly, they mentioned residences.
Which would be when the issue about, like my example with the buffer district comes up. You know, residences are treated differently under certain provisions of the code. So I think they're affording agriculture uses a couple more rights by saying, as applies to residential uses in an R3 district, as opposed to just saying, as applying the dimensional restrictions of an R3 district in general.
The residences under C are qualified, different from single-family, single-dwelling units, right? These are residences for his farm laborers.
What's the, where's my point in the important?
My point is, is that we talk about indenting, that that would suggest that we're talking about the same subject matter. And why it's not indented, but it's a separate subsection here, appears to be because there's a distinction between single-dwelling units and residents for farm labor.
So if this were to apply to only single-dwelling units, it would start, it would say that. It would say, you know, for single-dwelling units on an agricultural use, use the R3 zoning district. This doesn't say that. It says, all zoning, all zoning provisions and restrictions for single-dwelling units in the R3 district shall apply as a general statement for the agricultural use supplementary zoning section. It could very easily have been written to say what I think you're suggesting it might say. And that's just not the case. Can you hear me? I'm sorry, I was leaning backwards.
Well, that's, that's the core issue, lot, lot coverage. Does the R3 lot coverage apply or not? And that's something we need to discuss.
Yes. I just want to highlight again, if it doesn't, then there's no limitation. It's silent. The district is created to keep lot coverage low, and that interpretation results in no limit. That can't be the interpretation. If that were the interpretation, I would hope the town board is putting a moratorium on developments so you could fix the code. It, it's just, that's just a nonsensical interpretation that would result in disaster.
Other questions?
Not on this point.
No, it's a lot to digest. I appreciate-
We've been working with it for a while. I understand it's an immediate one.
We got, we got paperwork throughout the week. And every one was 10, 12 pages, a lot of reading. And everybody's been hitting the books here in the codebooks. So we need a little time to digest everything you've presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you have ability to both see the visual and the audio out in the waiting room when the other parties come in?
Pretty good, yeah.
Okay. Because there may be an opportunity to have some rebuttal. And I want to make sure that your entire group is able to hear what the other party says.
Yup. I think that'll work.
Good.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
We're sanitizing again for those folks at home watching and wondering.
When are we going to hear from the public then?
Well, they'll have an opportunity to call in. We'll listen to the formal presentations first, then give the public an opportunity to comment. All right, could you state your name, please, please?
Your name?
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Warren Rosenbaum. One of the first of the developer, CK Fresh Farms. And with me tonight is one of my partners, Jerry Goldman. We're both from the law firm of Woods Oviad Gilman at 1900 Bausch &amp; Long Place in Rochester, New York. And also in the audience with us is Keith Sernick, S-E-R-N-I-C-K, who is in-house counsel and an advisor to the developer. And we also have two representatives of our clients' consulting engineers, VME associates, Peter Vars and Rebecca Glitch, who are here to the extent that any technical issues regarding the project may come up during the course of the presentations this evening. I first want to thank the board on behalf of the developer and its staff for all its prior courtesies, and as well as the opportunity to address you tonight. This is a very important project for my client and a very important project I would submit for the town of Webster in a number of, for a number of reasons. We obviously are mindful of the degree of public interest that's been expressed in this project. And we do want to start out by speaking briefly about what I think we can all agree on is the role of the Zoning Board of Appeals concerning this matter. We did, were able to hear part of the presentation made by the applicants. And in many respects, it mirrored the speech they made to the planning board several months ago, as a result of which the planning board unanimously approved the project. But we not, we don't want to deal with planning board issues, policy issues tonight. What we want to do is speak to you about what we believe the zoning board's role is. And we don't, I don't want the board to think that, that we are lecturing to the board because we think the board itself has a wealth of experience. How do I know this? My partner Jerry Goldman is kind of the dean of zoning land use lawyers in Munder County. And he tells me that this board is very well-qualified and has a wealth of experience. Not only that, the board is assisted by a very able staff and able counsel. And I'm confident that the board will be advised that its role in this matter is to read the plan language, we think the plan language of the code, and reach what we think will be the obvious conclusions from the facts. I'd like to hand out and make part of the record, before we begin, a number of items. And I'll try to do this as efficiently as I can. Some of these items may have already been delivered to the board members, but for the sake of completeness, I'm going to hand out a suitable number of sets of a number of exhibits. One is a letter from me, from Woods Oviad Gilman, dated June 4, 2020, addressed to the town of Webster Zoning Board of Appeals. The letter is on four pages, together with a two-page Exhibit A. The Exhibit A being a letter dated November 5, 2019, from the New York State Department of Agricultural Markets, signed by Michael Latham, L-A-T-H-A-M Director. Number two, I am going to hand you a PDF of a PowerPoint, which I believe has already been delivered to each member of the board. It is a PowerPoint that consists of six numbered pages plus an Exhibit A. The Exhibit A is the same letter from Mr. Latham from the Department of Agricultural Markets that was attached to my Exhibit, or the June 4, 2009, letter. I'm also going to be distributing to each of the board members sections of the town's zoning code. Not because I don't believe that the board has a copy of the zoning code, but because I printed out what I believe to be the pertinent and perhaps the only pertinent provisions of the code that we need to discuss this evening. And in which I've taken the liberty of highlighting certain portions of the sections. And the sections I'm going to be handing out to the board now are Sections 225-12, entitled Large Lot, Single Family Residential District. Also, Section 225-73, entitled Agricultural Uses. And Section 225-11, entitled R-3 Single Family Residential District. Again, I've highlighted what I believe to be the most pertinent portions of each of those sections. So if I can hand this to Mr. Benway or Mr. Artuzo, whichever you prefer, I would ask that these be distributed to the, to the board. May I do that at this time?
Of course.
Yes, please.
Mr. Artuzo.
Mr. Rosenbaum, well, that's being passed out. You mentioned early that, quote, "you saw some of the applicant's presentation."
I did.
I just want to be sure. You saw some of it because you weren't watching it 100% of the time or that you had any difficulties out in the room, hearing or observing the applicants?
No, Mr. DeMarco, we were perfectly able to hear all the, all the statements and words that were made at the podium here, as well as the comments and questions from the board members and counsel. No, that worked out very well.
Great.
While Mr. Artuzo is handing that out, I'd like to talk a little bit about Section 225-108D1, which I think is what we're operating here. And that, and that's not one of the sections I've handed out. But that is the section that talks about the, what the job or role is of the Zoning Board of Appeals in respect of an interpretation of the code, which is what we're talking about here tonight, which I believe, although I'll defer to my partner Jerry Goldman, who's the expert on this. But I believe this is considered a type 2 action under Seeker. And under, under 225-108D1, the board is entitled, and it's discretion based upon its own understanding and reading of the code, that it may do one of three things. And those, one of those, those three things are addressed to what is a, is a claim to have been an apparent or an assumed finding or ruling previously made by the town's Department of Public Works and/or its chief code enforcement officer. Because we wouldn't be here today unless there were an appeal asking for an interpretation. So somebody necessarily had to make a determination before the project got to the planning board. So somebody necessarily had to make a determination before the project got to the planning board based upon Judge Donna Frio's decision. Somebody must have made a determination that this was, in fact, a permitted use in the large lot district, and that, number two, the 20% maximum lot coverage limit in the R3 residential district did not apply to this agricultural use, because if those determinations had not been made presumably, it never would have got to the planning board, according to the project opponents. So the board is going to be, is called upon to make an interpretation with respect to those two issues. Is this a expressly permitted use in the large lot residential district? And number two, whether the area requirements, the coverage requirements of the 20% maximum area applicable to the R3 district is to be imported into the large lot district with respect to an agricultural use. And with respect to those issues, the board can do one of three things. It can reverse those rulings. In other words, you can determine that your building department or your chief code enforcement officer is wrong in his or her interpretation of the code. The board, in the alternative, can determine that it is going to modify those findings in some form or fashion, either with respect to the question of whether or not the project is a permitted use in the LL district, for example, or it can affirm or agree with those rulings. And we would, we are respectfully submitting that the plain wording of the code, which I think the board is bound to apply, using a common sense approach to what the code says and how all the words fit together, and to try to harmonize how the scheme of the code fits together, using the words without disregarding any of the words, and try to fit it all together. And I think that the conclusion you're going to come to is a fairly easy one and a certain one. I think you'll be very comfortable with it when we're done with this presentation and after you finish your deliberations. So I see that Mr. Artuso has finished handing out those exhibits. So the first issue is, does the project constitute an expressly permitted agricultural use in the large lot district in which it is located? Section 225-12 lists all of the uses that are expressly permitted as of right in the large lot district. And 1225-12A6 says, quote-unquote, "agricultural uses." What could be clearer than that? Is an agricultural use a permitted use in the industrial district, or the commercial district, or other districts? No. But is it expressly permitted in this district? Yes. And does the large lot district have its own area requirements? Yes. And is the farm use in question subject to those area requirements? Yes. So unlike Section 225-73, which deals with accessory uses agriculture as an agricultural use, where it says that an agricultural use is permitted in any district, we have a district that it's expressly permitted without making a reference to an accessory use. This is not an accessory use in the large lot district. It's a permitted principal use in the large lot district. So we need to distinguish 225-73, which is only applicable if it's an accessory use in the large lot district, from the expressly permitted use in the large lot district. So we would submit to you that much of what is in 225-73 is irrelevant, and we'll get, I'll get into that in a bit more, and I'm sure the board will have some questions, and I'll be happy to address them to the best of my ability when those questions come up. Another question has come up, and that is, if we're going to have an agricultural use in the town of Webster, must it be something called a customary agricultural use? Customary agricultural operations, I believe that's the verbiage that Mr. Tantillo was talking about to the board pursuant to Section 225-73F. And bear in mind again, that that only applies if it's an accessory use in a district. We are dealing with an agricultural use which is an expressly permitted use. So what is a customary agricultural operation? We don't believe it applies to the large lot district, but even if it were to apply to the large lot district, we are growing hydroponic lettuce. I don't think I need to resort to a learned treatise or an encyclopedia to tell the board that hydroponics have been around, I'm 73 years old, and it's been around since I was a child. So I would respectfully submit, and some references to that are in the letter that I submitted to the board dated June 4. There's nothing that's uncustomary about growing hydroponic food. So we believe that the plain language of the code shows that the project is a permitted use in the large lot district, and even to the extent that the board felt that somehow we have to apply the customary agricultural operations, bear in mind that there's absolutely no definition for that term in this code, no definition in the code whatsoever. And the board would have to make it up out of the whole cloth in order to come up with an interpretation that the code itself doesn't provide. And I believe that those of you who are experienced on the board, as well as your counsel, can tell you that the code must be construed in favor of landowners when there is an ambiguity. Do I think there's an ambiguity? No. But to the extent the board feels there's an ambiguity, we believe that the board must construe it in favor of the landowner, in this case, Mr. Weber, who is one of the applicants for this project, as well as CEA Fresh Farms. The second issue, which I believe Mr. Tantillo spent the bulk, if not all, of his time on, dealt with the 20% maximum lot coverage area, where Mr. Tantillo wants to import all of the bulk or area requirements of the R3 residential district into the large lot district as it applies to a farm. Now, I think the board will quickly find out, will quickly see, this is completely unreasonable and can't possibly have been the intention of the co-drafters. 225-73C, and again, we're assuming, for the sake of argument, that 225-73, accessory use, is applicable to a use that's expressly permitted use in the large lot district and therefore is not an accessory use. But let's assume, for the sake of our discussion, that 225-73 applies to an agricultural use even though it's in the large lot district. 225-73C allows the owner of an agricultural use to build separate residence for farm labors, farmhands, and others. And that subsection is immediately followed by Subsection 225-73D pertaining to agricultural accessory uses in general, and states that, quote, "except as herein above provided. All zoning provisions and restrictions, quote, 'as to single-family units,' end quote, of residential district R3 shall apply." Now, what the opponents of the project would like the board to do is ignore the words "as to single-family units" and pretend that those words don't exist, and instead to read it as follows. "Except as herein above provided, all zoning provisions and restrictions of residential district R3 shall apply." Because really, that's what you'd have to conclude if you want to agree with Mr. Tantillo's position. And if, in fact, in fact, you couldn't, based on Mr. Tantillo's argument, you couldn't pick and choose which one of the R3 bulk requirements apply and which don't. You'd have to apply all of them. Otherwise, you would be acting arbitrarily by applying some and not others. So if all of the bulk requirements of the R3 district were to apply to agricultural uses in the large lot district, then the words "as to single-family units" would have been unnecessary, completely unnecessary. So why would we, why would we give import to words that are superfluous or unnecessary or irrelevant? Because really, that's what Mr. Tantillo's argument is. So just look at the language and imagine those words being deleted. Now, the project opponents would have the board apply 275-73D as if those words were not there, but those words are there to make clear, and the only reason possible that it could be in there is to make clear that the only bulk requirements of the R3 district that apply are those that are specific to farmhand dwellings. If you're going to build residences on your project to house your farm labors, then you better have decent housing for farm labors, which includes habitable floor area, yard area, and so forth. But the thing about this project is, we're not having any residences on this project. We're arguing about something that's never going to happen here. This is a project that's not going to have any single-family residences on it. So I have to ask the question, and I think the board can easily supply the answer, how does this even apply to this project? So, and again, if you look at the letter, the June 4 letter, I showed you how inconsistent it would be if you applied all the bulk and area reforms of the R3 district and imported them into the large lot district as it applied to farm agricultural uses. And you could see, there's differences and conflicts between sides, between minimum frontage, minimum front setback, minimum rear setback, minimum side yard. There's just two completely different sets of rules in the R3 and the large lot district, but simply you can't, you can't cram this round peg into a square hole. Now, I understand, and the developer understands that there's a lot of controversy about the project, but what important projects, economically important projects, don't have any controversy? Can you think of even one? I can't, in this day and age. There's always two sides to the story, and what the court wanted this board to do is focus on the words of the code and not deal with questions about what is the proper policy? Is this place properly sited? This is already looked at by the planning board in seven zip. They said, "This is the right place for it." And the board just, the court just wants you to say whether the building, the building department and the chief code enforcement officer made a mistake or not. We don't think they did, and we ask the court, we ask this board, respectfully, to deny the appeals and to affirm the determinations that this, in fact, is a permissive use in the large lot district, and that the bulk requirements in the R3 district as it applies to lot coverage, in fact, do not apply. Questions?
Mr. Rosenbaum, I think that it would be helpful to the board, at least from your side of the ledger, to take a moment and go through those three examples.
Yes, I will.
That are in your June 4 letter.
Yep.
Which demonstrate what your point is.
So the point I believe that Mr. DeMarco is asking about is to compare how the bulk requirements in the large lot district in which this use is going to be located differ from what I believe are the inapplicable, irrelevant bulk requirements in the R3 district, which, again, based on Mr. Tantillo's argument, would necessarily, you'd have to overrule, in effect, the bulk requirements of the large lot district and transport the R3 bulk requirements on a wholesale basis into that, just because it's a farm. And if you look at page three of my June 4 letter, which is one of the handouts, I've shown how the inconsistencies that are readily apparent in Mr. Tantillo's argument, because this can't possibly be what the code means. The first item, and they're numbered 1, 2, 3 on page three, and I'll wait till the board members get to that point. But number one, in the large lot district, 225-12B2 mandates a minimum lot width of 200 feet in the large lot district as compared to 225-11B3 that mandates a minimum lot width of 100 feet in the R3 district. So again, Mr. Tantillo says, "If you're going to have a farm in a large lot district," and I think that's only one of two districts, where farms are expressly permitted, "you can have as little as 100 feet minimum lot width." Now, that's not, does that make any sense to anybody? To have 100 feet minimum lot width in a large lot district? Well, that's what Mr. Tantillo's argument would lead you to, would lead you to that point, if you take it to a logical conclusion. Number three, the second point is, let's compare Section 225-12B1, which is a minimum lot area of three acres for residential use and five acres for non-residential use in the large lot district, and a farm, of course, would be a, would be a non-residential use. Compare that with 225-11B1A for the R3 district, where a residential has to have 22,000 square feet for residential, which is roughly, what, a half acre? Mr. Howser?
Yep.
I don't know.
Approximately.
Okay. You'd have a half acre and two acres for non-residential in the R3 district. So applying Mr. Tantillo's logic, you'd actually be able to have a smaller lot in the large lot district, if this was an agricultural use, according to Mr. Tantillo. And then number three, and again, these are just, I've just picked these out because I was, I think you might be able to come up with even more inconsistencies, and there are many more. But the third one is 225-12B4. In the large lot district, you need a minimum front setback of 75 and rear setback of 60 feet, compared with the R3 district, 225-11B5A, where you had a minimum front setback of a mere 50 feet and a rear setback of 50 feet. So again, it makes no sense. But what Mr. Tantillo would like you to do, he's going to cherry pick the one he wants to apply, and he says, "Well, let's use the 20% maximum lot coverage because that's the one he likes, and that's the one his client likes because we have a 38% coverage, and that's something that the planning board approved." So I think, I think you'll see that we're talking about reading the plain language of the code, making, coming to logical conclusions about what it says, without having to divine whether this is a good thing or a bad thing for the town of Webster from a policy standpoint, which of course is not what we're here to do. So again, I think, I think the board, after it gives some consideration and thought, will very easily come to the conclusion that your building department and your chief code enforcement officer had it right. That's my presentation, unless you've got some questions.
I've got a question. So why do you say that the chief code enforcement officer had it right when he said that this was an agricultural use permitted rather than a factory farming operation?
Why do I think he had it right? Because I'm reading the code, and I read the code the same way presumably that the chief code enforcement officer did.
One of the, one of the notes I read from the judge that sent it back to the zoning board is that there's no record that the chief zoning, or the chief enforcement officer, code enforcement, made that determination. They implied that the planning board made that interpretation, which is not appropriate. And unfortunately, we don't have minutes from the PRC meeting, but I think that's one of their contentions.
So, Mr. Brown, let me explain what I think your concern, let me rephrase what I think your concern is. Judge Donna Frio concluded that there necessarily had to be some findings made by the Department of Public Works or the chief code enforcement officer, or it would never have been able to get to the planning board, because the Public Works Department reviews the applications, and they make a preliminary determination of whether or not this fits all the requirements for permitted use in the code, and whether or not it fits the necessary bulk requirements. And if it does, it's going to tell the applicant, "You need a variance. Go to the zoning board of appeals." So that's what I believe, and that's why, if you read Judge Donna Frio's decision, as I had... I have too many times already, unfortunately, Judge Donafrio is saying what I think is obvious to everybody, somebody must have made a determination in the Department of Public Works or it never would have gotten to the planning board. So that's when I, when I say that affirm the finding of the chief code enforcement officer and/or the Department of Public Works, I'm saying, somebody in that department made that determination or it never would have gotten to the planning board, and we're asking you to affirm whatever that determination was. And that's what I, that's what I meant to say. Perhaps I said it not very well, but that's what I meant.
No, I understand. I've been to enough PRC meetings to know the discussions that go on and so on, and so there's quite lengthy discussions about that. So, I'm not saying I doubt that it happened. I'm just saying that's one of the judge's implications.
Yes, I think the judge is making an assumption that it would never have gotten to the planning board unless those, unless somebody at the Department of Public Works had reviewed this for zoning compliance purposes.
You made a comment that Mr. Tantillo wanted the board to disregard a couple of words from, I think, 225-11. What were those words again? Can you say?
Yes. The words that Mr. Ten, what the words that I said Mr. Tantillo would like the board to ignore are actually in 225-73.
Now, see, 225-73, you actually made the statement that you thought it was irrelevant, that section.
Well, I did, and I made the argument in the alternative, Mr. DiMarco. Okay? So in other words, I have to, I'm representing the developer, I have to.
Well, I'm just trying to make, I want to focus on, you, Mr. Tantillo, you made a comment that he wanted this board to ignore a couple of words.
Yes.
But you made a statement earlier that said 225-73 agricultural uses was irrelevant section of the code. Could you explain that?
Yes. I made the argument in the alternative. In other words, when you, when you think you've got a winning argument, and you've got two different arguments, both of which are winning, you're going to argue both of those places, both of those arguments. I'm sorry.
Oh, microphone.
When you have, when you have a winning argument, you're going to cover all your bases. What I'm saying is that 225-73 deals with an accessory use, because it says, 225-73, that agricultural uses are permitted in all districts. So we don't have to rely on 225-73 for an agricultural, for a permitted agricultural use in the large lot district, because unlike, but it says customary agricultural operation. So. That's 225-73, yes.
73.
Yes.
Customary.
Yes.
I mean, customary, according to Webster's, is according to customary or usual practices associated with a particular society, place, or set of circumstances.
Yep.
So, I mean, this is, this is a different use of, I mean, you're growing lettuce, but it's, it's not your typical, I mean, anybody that I said, "Hey, what does a farm mean to you?" They're not going to describe what you're, what you're talking about right now. That's, that's not customary. So, I mean, that's a big word that you, that you said is irrelevant. To me, customary, there's a, there's a reason and a purpose why that word was put there.
Okay, so, Mr. DiMarco, I completely understand your concern, and I want to address Number one, 225-73, this deals with an accessory use. Is an agricultural use an accessory use in the large lot district? No, it's expressly permitted use. Number, number two, so, but even, even if this were an accessory use, even if it had to be an accessory use in order to have a farm in the large lot district, what does 225-73 mean? Now, you're focusing on the customary farming operation, and the only thing I can say is that you don't define that in the code. The code of the town of Webster doesn't define customary.
I know, but it does, it does list a few things that were added. Permitted uses shall be, they actually added fire stations and emergency medical services in 2014. They also added communications towers in 2000, oh, where is that? In that, excuse me, 1996, primarily because I don't think communication towers were a big problem or, or a concern prior to 1996, and they had to amend section 225-11 in order to accommodate communications tower, and they had to amend 225-11 to accommodate fire stations and emergency medical. I think, personally, I think that the whole thing is the interpretation of what you, what your, your definition of agricultural is.
Well, we know, we know the, we know the code talks about greenhouses. If you look at 225, section three, which contains the definitions of your code, it says agricultural use includes farm, includes greenhouses. We've got greenhouses. Where do you draw the line? Is one greenhouse okay? Is one greenhouse customary? Is two greenhouses customary? What point is it no longer customary? And if the code doesn't define it, then you're making it up. You've got, you've got to make it up as you go along, and with all due respect to the board, you can't do that. You can't do that. You can't just make it up as you go along. If it's not in the code, it doesn't, it's not a restriction. Mr. Goldman, did you have something you want? Mr. DiMarco, and Mr. Chairman, can I allow Mr.?
Of course, of course, but before you leave, Mr. Rosenbaum, you keep using the word accessory use, that you don't get that far in your analysis. Where are you picking that up, accessory use?
Well, I believe that, if I can find the section here, hold on.
As I read, it says supplementary regulations. That's how we land at 225-73, I believe.
Yes, it's a supplementary regulation, and really.
That applies to our district.
And really, you've got to decide how 225-73 fits, if at all, in a large lot district. And what I'm, what I'm talking about is item number F, Mr. DiMarco, it says customary agricultural operations or farming may be conducted in all zones. And, and that's really what I, what I'm referring to as an accessory use, because this allows you to have a customary agricultural use in the R1 district, and R2 district, the industrial district, any district. And when you do, these provisions of 225-73 apply. And I'm checked, and what I'm doing is comparing that to, to the large lot district, where you don't need to resort to 225-73 in order to supply the bulk requirements for the large lot district, because they're already in there, because an agricultural use is an expressly permitted use in the large lot district. So, again, what's customary to, to me may be something that's completely not customary to Mr. DiMarco or Mr. Goldman. But where do you draw the line? The code doesn't define it.
That would be why this is to the board for an interpretation.
That's true.
And when you say that, what's customary, at the corner of Whiting and Clem Road, there's been a greenhouse operation that's been there for at least 70 years. These are small, maybe 12-foot-high-at-the-peak greenhouses. There's four of them. They're not large at all. You could fit two of them into this room. The farmer at that point in history, when it was being farmed, lived on the property. They still farmed some peaches there, limited numbers. Would you please compare that to what you're talking about, which is essentially large factory buildings with no farmer in residence? And explain how that is a customary farm use?
Again, Mr. Schneider, I'm not sure that we need to, we need to rely on the customary language, but your question is important to you, so I'm going to answer it. Mr. Schneider, I don't know where you draw the line, and that's the problem with the code. It doesn't tell the people who own land what they can and cannot do. And if it doesn't tell the people what they can and cannot do, then it can't be construed in a way that would prohibit them from doing what they plan to do. There's got to be some, there's got to be definition. There's got to be certainty, and this code doesn't provide that. What I'm saying, that if we came up with a definition that has no foundation in the code, we would be acting in an arbitrary manner, and I don't think that's what the board wants to do. I think the board wants to adhere to what the code says. So, because you have no definition for customary, and again, it's assumed that definition applies to the, to the large lot district, then I think we've got a problem. The board has a problem with importing into the code something that doesn't exist. So, again, I understand what is and what is not a big, a big farming operation and what is a small farming operation. And if the code were to say, "The customary use is defined as not more than eight, X acres, or not more than so many square feet of greenhouses," that would be fine. But that's not what the code says. It leaves it for guesswork as to what landowners are supposed to believe they can and cannot do on their property. And they leave it to people, board members, to divine what that might be, and I respectfully suggest that's not what the board's role is here. Now, I completely respect the difficulty in making this decision, and I know there's a lot of interest and emotion involved in this, and I know there's many, many people in the town that are opposed to this project, but if that were the simple role of the board, just do a poll of how many people are opposed to a project, then there would be no reason to have this board on, in place. You would just take a poll, and who likes it, who doesn't like it, and whoever has the most, the greatest head count wins. That's not the way to do land planning, right? I think we can all agree on that. Mr. Goldman, you want to add something?
Please.
You have to go to.
Mr. Rosenbaum has to exit, and you have to step up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Jerry Goldman. I'm an attorney and agent also for CEA Fresh Farms. I'd like to address Mr. DiMarco's comment, Mr. Schneider's comment, about, about how we deal with customary. The fact of the matter is, is that this is, this is pretty simple if we follow along the lines. In the large lot district, agriculture is a specifically permitted use. Agriculture is defined in 225-3, and that definition we've gone through, dealing with the growing of crops in greenhouses. So that is, that's permitted. It's a use of land and buildings to grow agricultural products in otherwise and in greenhouses. The 225-73 section came in later. 225-73 came in, I believe, as a part of the state's effort to try to encourage right-to-farm. So that caused the town to go and to add a section to allow agriculture in all districts, for those districts in which it's not an enumerated use, industrial, commercial, some of the others, smaller residential, for those types of sections, those types of zoning districts, then 225-73's language on customary kicks in. In the areas where it is specifically permitted, you go to the code definition of what is agriculture. So you don't, in a large lot district, you do not get to customary. So that is the basic issue of the permitted use. The second piece of it.
Mr. Goldman, let me just interrupt you there. So, because it looks like that was added in 2010.
Yeah.
All right? So, I mean, is it fair to suggest that if they wanted to take the word customary and put it into the large lot code section, that they would have qualified agriculture there?
They could have done a couple of things. Could have changed the definition of agriculture. They could have changed the large lot district to say customary agriculture. They could have done lots of things, but they didn't. What they did is that they left the agriculture in the districts where agriculture was allowed, and large lot made sense for agriculture. Now, again, you can argue about the greenhouses. Mr. Schneider, we've been at it for a long time, dealing with this kind of stuff, but you can, you can talk about greenhouses, but again, we don't define the size, the magnitude of what greenhouses are. The hydroponic growing that we're doing here has been done on the scale elsewhere. It's coming here. The code hasn't necessarily caught up with it right now, but we have to take the code as it is written right now. And as it is written, agriculture is defined as the growing of farm products in land and buildings and in greenhouses. If we were in a commercial district or an industrial district, which doesn't have it specifically defined, then we come into the customary. But the customary only applies in those districts where it is not a specifically permitted use. It's pretty fundamental by the language, and I know, and, you know, we know the dynamics of what's going on. We know that in, you know, that people don't necessarily like it in the immediate neighborhood. People in other parts of town don't necessarily like it either, but there are lots of people who are looking forward to seeing leafy green lettuce being available 12 months a year in Monroe County. And the fact of the matter is, this is a permitted use, and this is a district in which it, in which the code allows it. I, just to point out, in Mr. Young's presentation was very good. It was one which was also made to the planning board, but notice what it says on the first page. It talks about it being inappropriate. It didn't talk about it being illegal. It didn't talk about it being contrary to code. He says, "There are lots of reasons why we don't want this in our neighborhood." That's not the standard that we're looking at. The standard that we are looking at is exactly reading the code, reading the language, matching up the sections from one, matching up the sections to the other. Now, as to the 225-73D issue that we have talked about, I think it's been, I think it's been pointed out on a number of occasions. If you took those words out as to single-family dwellings, then all of R3 would apply. What meaning does it have to put as to single-family dwellings? It's meant to say, "We don't want row houses. We don't want multiple dwellings for farm laborers. We don't want any of those types of uses in here, in this particular district. We don't have standards dealing with building height, for example." So we put a building height in there, which is in the R3 district. We talk about minimal, minimum habitable area, what size of the units have to be. And that's why it doesn't say the residential districts, because it applies the R3 standards, which are specific. Basically, the difference between R1, R2, and R3 are bulk requirements, including the size of the buildings themselves. So, the language, if we ignore that language, then it becomes superfluous, and what's it doing there? And that's basically what the courts have said, is that if there are words in the code, they mean something. Now, the absence, if you don't take those words into account, then there's a gap in there. And that's, that's basically the sum of the argument.
Occam's razor, then.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Occam's razor, then. Occam's razor? If there are two interpretations, then the simplest is probably the correct one.
Yep. It is. It is. And the fact of the matter is, is that the simplest one in terms of permitted use is that agriculture is permitted. Here's the definition of agriculture. Boom, simple. When you got to stretch to try to get to another section, which talks about customary, then you're on the other side of the razor, I guess, if that's the appropriate term to use. But the, but the thing is, is that why would those words be there? They had to be there for a reason. And the reason was, it's to deal with the houses, not to deal with other requirements. That's as simple as it gets.
Now, within the definition of agricultural use, within the definition, it actually refers to Section 225-73.
It says, "See, see that section," and that was to take a look at...
So do I discount that section, or is that part of the definition by nature of the fact that it's listed there?
No, it's not part of the definition, because it doesn't, it doesn't say, it doesn't say implying anything else other than what is there. What it's saying is, is that agricultural uses, you have to take a look at 225-73, but you don't necessarily change what the definition of agriculture is. It's saying there are other requirements you have to take a look at. And that deals with the houses, deals with the, as it relates to single-family dwellings that you have to take a look at.
Any other questions?
Did I, did I get your, the answer to your question?
No, I'm still...
You forgot what it was.
I remember what it was.
Part of your argument is that this is an agricultural project.
Yes.
All right? But you, but clearly, in the code, it says customary.
No, no.
It says right here, that says customary agricultural operations or farming.
It's allowed in all districts. Customary is allowed in all districts. Agriculture as defined is allowed in the large lot district.
But it's only dealing with agricultural. It says customary agricultural operations or farming. It's not talking about residences, it's not talking about anything else. It's talking about customary agricultural operations or farming.
But then let me ask you this. Why don't we eliminate the definition of agricultural in, in the definition?
I can't answer that question, because I, I didn't write the code. I'm only, I'm only...
Right, and it's there because...
But they, but they, in order to address the problem that we're talking about right now, in the past, they've added things to make it clear. They added fire stations, emergency medical services, because it didn't exist prior to 2014. Somebody came before the Board and wanted to build a fire station and a, and a medical service in, in R3 district, okay? Somebody wanted to erect a communications tower prior to 1996. It didn't address it. Somebody came here and made an argument. They added, they added that. Now, I'm, I'm just saying that you're, from my, my perspective, what you're describing, and what I know you're going to build, because I've seen the farm off of 104, okay, is stretching the, is the interpretation of what a customary agricultural development is for me. But Mr. DiNoto, what, what the applicant, what CEA is trying to say is that under their interpretation, you don't reach that customary...
Under their interpretation?
Decision.
Right. It's under their interpretation, though.
But you understand, it's a distinction, you never get there if you adopt their reasoning of the chronology of the statute and what's allowed in the large lot district.
The customary was added, but it was added to include it in all the other districts, as I recall, and I may be wrong about this. I think the origin of this was, every seven years or so, they review an agricultural plan. And there was a criticism in an agricultural plan, that Webster was too restrictive in terms of the districts which included agriculture. So the Town Board, in their wisdom, went and they added this particular section. Now, as you pointed out, people were concerned about communications towers. People were concerned about fire stations. They didn't come here, because the zoning board doesn't write the law. The zoning board interprets the law that set forth. They went to the Town Board, and they got that, they got that amended to allow it to happen. In the same way, someone could go and try to amend a code, but the fact of the matter is, we're here tonight, taking a look at a code that says, "In the large lot district, agriculture is permitted. Agriculture is defined in the code. We meet the definition." That's the end of that issue, or should be.
So prior to 2014, they didn't allow agriculture in an industrial district, for instance?
Correct.
Ironically, the citizens are saying it's an industrial operation, and it wasn't even allowed in industrial districts.
Yeah, I mean, the thing that we had heard is move it to Xerox, move it to Xerox, you know, and put it at Xerox. Well, you know, the fact of the matter is, is that prior to the amendment, to bring in this 225-73, I don't think it was allowed in the industrial district. So, you know, that's, that's really the issue. What this was meant to do was to correct a gap. And sometimes correcting a gap creates a bit of a problem, because they have a term that's not defined. We put customary agricultural operations out there. Should be defined. What's customary?
Eric, you brought up Lockyer Farm on Five Mile Line Road and Waying Road. There were numerous greenhouses on that parcel prior to the subdivision there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And from what I recall, they couldn't have possibly met the acreage or coverage requirement. There again, it's all depending on, unfortunately, I go back too far, and I could possibly cloud the issue. I think the ag use was in the code back in the 60s, 68. I don't, Jeff, do you have the old book, the old code book?
Your what?
Yeah. No, do you have it here?
No, I don't.
There again, that's, that's what I'm recalling. And there again, to cloud the issue even further, if you look at the accessory buildings, farm operations are basically excluded from any type of provisions from accessory buildings. And that's under Section 225-36. And that's why earlier, when I stated that that provision, 225-73D, dealt with single-family residential units, somebody indicated you could just delete that. I mean, that's what they're trying to establish in that section, for migrant workers or tenants, or people that have worked on the farm. They were trying to establish that those units would have some land that would be associated with those units, rather than have the old traditional row houses for migrant workers. There again, my opinion.
So the code is trying to maintain equality of the additional houses on the property?
That's correct, yes. There again, that's my opinion. There again, the Town Code always tried to provide some flexibility for farms, and that's why when they even dealt with accessory buildings, they excluded any type of provisions for building accessory buildings on farms. And that's under 225-36D. In case anybody wants to look that up. I mean, yes, in the section prior to that, it said agricultural buildings would be no higher than 20 feet, but then the very last subsection of that says farmers don't have to comply with it, so. But they, the code always dealt with some flexibility for farms.
One other thing, I mean, we've talked about this in the leafy greens and the agriculture and the, and the greenhouses and everything else. You take dairy farms. A lot of dairy farms, we talked about these percentage coverage situations, a lot of dairy farms have a lot greater than 20% building coverage, because they have to have buildings and structures to deal with the farm animals, to deal with the cows. So it's not unusual always to have relatively large structures in conjunction with farm agriculture, if you will, type uses. So, you know, it's just we're dealing with greenhouses now as a vehicle to be able to grow. And like I said, the end result is something I think is going to be beneficial at the end of the day, for everyone to be able to get these vegetables locally grown, don't have to worry about it in California. You know, it's all, it's all controlled and everything else. So that's, that's really what's happening now in terms of agriculture.
Any other question?
How does the use in question fit with the large lot code that is intended to encourage large lot residential development, where conditions of the environment, availability of utilities, surrounding land use patterns dictate that residential densities and the amount of land covered by impervious surface remain low? You're covering roughly 50% of the acreage with impervious surface. Is that considered low coverage?
Yeah, I'm not going to say this is low coverage. You know I'm not going to say that, because that's not the case.
So it exactly contradicts the...
No, no. What you're reading, what you're reading is the preamble. You're not reading the actual section of what is a permitted use and what isn't.
That was the intent of the code, though.
You can talk about a purpose clause, but it also talks about those coverage issues as it deals with, with the residential as well. So, you know, the fact of the matter is, it doesn't really specifically address, that purpose clause doesn't specifically address what we're talking about. I'm trying to look up 225-73, or 225-12.
225-12, right.
Let's go to 12. Let's go to 12.
And then is...
Am I eyes are good enough to even hear this? It's all right.
Mine hurt.
It's all right. So the intent of the article is to encourage large lot residential development. Now, granted, and that's what it says, is to encourage large lot residential development, but it specifically does allow the agricultural use, so it's inconsistent with that purpose to start with, by definition and by what the code says.
Well, is it if I...
It talks about the, it talks about residential densities and the amount of land covered by impervious surface. So to my mind, the way I take a look at that is, it's talking about impervious surface as it deals with residential densities. And the fact of the matter is, is that the large lot district does restrict because of the size of the district, and I know members of the Board live in the large lot district. You can't have a whole lot of residential density in, in the large lot district. As a matter of fact, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think that clustering is allowed, even in the large lot district.
No, it's not.
It's not. So to that extent, it doesn't allow for residential densities, and that is how the code addresses the issue. But the purpose clause itself is a preamble, and it's pretty much setting up what is in, what is in the code. And what it's saying is, for residential uses, we don't want them to be dense. It's not saying for agricultural uses, and it's not saying for other uses that are permitted in that district. Purely a purpose clause, which is essentially a preamble.
I think it goes back to the cows example. I could, I could stick a dairy farm on that property and put in two very large barns, fill them with dairy cows. It's a traditional farming operation. I could have the same amount of impervious surface, and it's still permitted because it's an agricultural use.
Do you folks have another speaker?
I'm, I'm all set. I was just, I was just going to clarify a couple of points. So I don't know, is there anybody else? I think we're all set in terms of our presentation on this. So if there are no more questions, I'll put my mask on and sit down.
Yeah, I, I think we're going to, we're going to ask the other group if they want to rebut, and then if you folks want to rebut as well, welcome to stick around.
Mr. Bro, maybe take a recess for five minutes?
Yeah, we've been here for two and a half hour. Actually, we've been here more. We get here early today. So let's, let's take a little recess for the Board, and we'll resume in about 10, 10 minutes. Yep. We've had some comment via Facebook, or email, or Webster webpage, and actually, Mr. Artuso is going to read a comment. This, this meeting is open to public comment. We're going to open the phone lines up in a moment also. But Josh, you want to read what, what you have?
Sure. This first comment is from Elizabeth Wager Stenslich. She says, "I live at 828 Bannerwood Drive in Webster. We are greatly opposed to the CEA Fresh Farm Project. I have attached a picture taken in my backyard on 1228-19. This is the glow of the Intergrow Factory located two miles from my home. The CEA project is even closer to my home. We are highly concerned by the increased levels of noise, light, and traffic this project would bring to our neighborhood." Second comment from Jennifer Brunig. She states that she lives across from the proposed development at 1804 State Road. She would like to state that she is in opposition to the development. And we have another comment from Jim Brunig, also residing at 1804 State Road. "Please note the word 'of' in 225-73. Single dwelling units of R3 shall apply. If this were only applicable to single dwelling units with agricultural use, then the word 'of' is not required. We must treat every word as important." Second comment from Jim Brunig, also 1804 State Road. "One last item. 'Of' indicates that single-family dwelling is a clarifier for R3. It is not saying that R3 only applies to single-family dwellings." We have an additional comment from Jennifer Brunig, also at 1804 State Road. She says, "May I add to my comment that the zoning board please look at the intent of our LL large lot district?" Thank you. And one final comment from Jim Brunig. "Please add that the preamble discussion of intent in the large lot section of the code provides a framework to interpret the code. This is useful in interpreting items like customary or R3, the 20% lot coverage. Contrary to the CEA position, the zoning board is to interpret the code. Also, the math presented by CEA and Mr. Schneider is incorrect. Dairy farms typically do not exceed 10% lot coverage. There is no basis to the contrary." And that sums up the online comments.
Okay. I'm going to open up the phone lines. This, this meeting is open to the public, so anybody wishing to speak for or against this project is welcome to call in. So, anybody wishing to speak for or against this project is welcome to call in, and, you know, we'll, we'll hear what you have to say. And then, the citizens group is going to rebut what would CEA's presentation have to say, and then we'll give the, the council for CEA another chance as well. It's important that we get, we want to hear everybody's voice before we, before we even begin to make a decision. Council? No calls yet. Why don't you step up and, and if the phone rings, I may interrupt you. Okay.
You'll have to forgive me. Usually I get up for these rebuttals and I say, I just have a few brief points, but I actually do have quite a bit based on what Jerry and Warren said. I have quite a few problems with their arguments. First of all, I want to address something that came really out of left field, the suggestion that 225-73 only deals with accessory uses. I want to be very clear that that's not the impression that anyone, anyone leaves here with tonight. That article of the zoning code is titled, you know, Jerry, Warren said supplemental regulations. He left out the last few words, supplemental regulations for all districts. So, it lists a bunch of different uses, and then if you're happening to build a project that's one of those uses, you have to comply with the supplemental regulations for that use. So, if you were building a bed and breakfast, you have to comply with section 71. If you were doing off-street parking, you comply with 72. If you're doing agricultural uses, you comply with 73. It's in addition to the individual regulations for each distinct district. You know, the suggestion was that you don't need to get to 73 because it's a permitted use in the large lot zoning district. I think he left off a chain in the logical link there. So, if you look at LL, the permitted uses, it includes agricultural uses. Then if you go to definitions for what an agricultural use is, it refers you to 225-73. So, normally, we talked about how subsections work with these codes. When a code section refers you to another section, it's generally incorporating that section as well. So, those regulations are incorporated into the definition of agricultural use. I want to talk about what Warren, Mr. Rosenbaum, sorry, characterized Judge Donat Frios' decision as. He suggested that Judge Donat Frios somehow held that code review for this project necessarily occurred, and that's not what the judge said. What the judge said was, "We're going to annul this planning board approval because one of two things happened. Either review for this project occurred and the ZBA appeal was screened from you guys, or review for the project didn't occur." The judge in no way said that, you know, the code enforcement officer found that this project was a permitted use. That is nowhere in her decision, and I hope you guys will have a copy. If not, I can provide it. I was accused of cherry picking a particular dimensional restriction, and I think that accusation kind of comes from misunderstanding of how bulk and dimensional restrictions apply to uses under a zoning code. So, I referred initially to a series of non sequiturs that were in the developer's letter, and this, this is what I was talking about, this list of certain dimensional restrictions and how if you apply them under my interpretation, they don't make any sense. But it's not really borne out by that reading. Like, he says, "Oh, the, the minimum lot size would change." We're okay with that. What that says is that small farms are allowed under this interpretation. It doesn't say anything else. So, when you go through this list of dimensional restrictions that apply to an agricultural use, and you check and see that it complies with every single one of them, and you find one that it doesn't apply with, or apply to, or that it doesn't comply with, that's not cherry picking. That's how zoning works. You have to comply with all of them. So, to point out that you don't meet the maximum lot coverage is not cherry picking maximum lot coverage. They don't get to pick and choose which ones they have to comply with. They have to comply with each and every dimensional restriction, one of which is lot coverage. So, I really just wanted to spell any notion that we're cherry picking at all and bring that to you guys' attention. I discussed with you guys how the use of the words, single-family residents weren't superfluous. Jerry again just accused me of, or, sorry, Mr. Goldman again accused us of offering a interpretation that was calling for superfluous words. That's where that distinction about like the zoning district buffer comes in, you know. Under that, would you guys, do you guys understand what I'm saying about that one? That's a little bit technical. He's saying that when they refer to, as applies to, single-family residences in R3 district, it would be superfluous to not apply the single-family residence portion of the language. But say, say that this property was on a zoning district buffer, right? And you guys have that portion in your code that says, where two districts abut and one district is residential, commercial use has to have a larger buffer from that district than a residential use, right? What this code is saying when it says, apply the restrictions as they would apply to a residential use, you know, for instance, here it's saying, "You wouldn't have to go outside that buffer. You could put it where you could put a residential use." That, that's just one example of how that language is not superfluous. I truly hope that none of you guys will credit the assertion that the language in the large lot residential zoning district provision, calling for low impervious surfaces, only applies to residential. There, there's absolutely nothing to support that interpretation. It's contrary to the reason that interpretation, or that language is there. It's environmental issue. It's for the quality of the neighborhood as a whole, and saying that only residential uses have to comply with this, this low impervious surface, it's, it just flies in the face of the district. I picked up on something Jerry said, said, "The code hasn't caught up with it yet." And I think what he did there was, he might have said the quiet part out loud. "We think that CEA is here because, we think, they think they've found a loophole in your zoning code." Mr. Rosenbaum discussed how it's not tenable to draw a line as to what customary agriculture is. That's why you guys are here. You guys are that line. So, when Mr. Goldman comes in and he says, "Oh, we don't think your code has caught up with this use, so we're going to try to get it in really quick before you can fix it," that's why the zoning board exists. It's to address, you know, things that maybe aren't as black and white as that. So, you guys are here to apply the word customary to say, "Hey, this isn't what they had in mind when they said this is what is permitted in this district." Thank you.
Thank you. I, I'm not sure that phone number is showing up on your screens at home. I'm not, I can't confirm, but our number is 872-7011, 872-7011. It is showing up? Okay, thank you. I was just concerned because the phone wasn't ringing. Okay, yeah, thank. Sorry. No. Yeah. Okay. Anybody have any questions? I appreciate it. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And I would just say, I heard you mention that you're going to offer a, a sort of rebuttal opportunity to the developer. I think just because it is our appeal, if we might have anything to add after that, I'd just ask for the opportunity.
Does anybody else from your group want to speak?
No.
Okay. All right, thank, thank you very much. Got to clean the podium one more time. Okay.
In our code? No.
So, we'll, we'll stand with what we had presented previously. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Have a good night. Any questions for Mr. Goldman?
No.
Okay. I want to, I want to thank both parties for the very professional manner in which they, they handled themselves, and I appreciate the comments that came in. We want to, this is such a, such a contentious issue that we want to be sure everybody's heard. It's very important to us. All right. You all have a good night, and thank you.
Thank you. Are you closing the public portion? No phone calls, correct?
We haven't had a call, no.
So, you're closing the public portion?
Yeah, at this point, what we'll do is we'll close, as long as these folks have nothing more to add, the phone hasn't rung. Josh read the comments that came in online. We're going to close the public portion of the meeting, and we'll turn it back to the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we're going to have a little bit of a discussion. I, there's a lot, there's a lot, a lot of data here, so I, I don't believe we're going to vote on this tonight. And according to our charge, I believe we have, we don't want to, we don't want to drag this out 60 days. We're going to, we're going to act on it in a very, very near future. But there's, there was a lot, a lot of information here tonight, so we need a little bit of time to discuss it amongst ourselves. You're welcome to stay, of course. This is, how do you lawyers do this every day? You think- We're going to get old before our time.
He's looking pretty good for 73.
Yeah, I mean, you know, they're both compelling arguments on both sides, and I just, I mean, we're arguing about a word, you know, a word here and a word there, and so on and so forth. I, I have a different, after listening to both sides, I have some different perspectives. So, I need time to think about it. I need time to go back to the code book, look at the sections again, read it again, and, you know, and see, you know, and see where, you know, where it leads me. I don't know if you all feel the same way, but we're welcome, we could discuss this right now amongst each other. It's, you know, it's a public hearing.
Maybe a little bit of discussion because I am having some trouble parsing it all.
Yeah, it's, there's a lot to this. There's a lot to this.
I mean, by the absolute verbal description, if you take it down that one particular path, then the code allows agriculture in large lot and greenhouses agriculture, and so therefore, you know, it's just like the dominoes going down. Now, does, on the other hand, this section pull in the definition of customary and things like that? Does it only apply to R3? Does it apply to all districts? I haven't made up my mind yet. Factory, factory farming in and of itself with such large buildings on such a small area would seem to be something we would rather have in an industrial zone. It's certainly going to have an impact on the existing residents and the future development as large lot residential, because people quite plain and frankly aren't going to want to live next to a factory. We had that problem with Studco and, I've forgotten the subdivision's name, Corinne, maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I-
Over in it.
Shallow Creek.
Alter industrial.
Shallow Creek, that's it. Because Karen and I were actually looking for property at that point, and she says, "Well, why don't we look in here?" And I said, "Absolutely not, because it puts right up on our industrial zone." And sure enough, they built Shallow Creek, and Studco was busy, you know, doing their industrial thing in their industrial zone, and the noise carried, and the neighbors weren't happy. So, there's a lot going on here. I have to agree with Mr. Verone on that one.
Yeah. One of the things, and I'm just, I'm just throwing out ideas. I don't, this is not my, I haven't made any decisions. One of the things that impressed me is that the 100 acres north of Xerox used to be zoned industrial. There's residential all around it, R3.
Oh, yeah.
So, one argument as well belongs in industrial, but here's this industrial building in full view of R3 houses, which are high density.
Yeah.
Relatively high density. So, you know, I, I'm just, I've been a lifelong resident of Webster, so I'm, I'm right, I know what's changed in the town and what's happened and so on and so forth. So, I'm just, I just keep, I'm churning these things over in my mind, you know, trying to come up with the logical conclusion, you know, and there's a lot to it. There's a lot to it.
Yeah, and I, I keep looking at it as, I went back to my old notes of the James Coon Zoning Board of Appeals technical publications regarding interpretations, because we keep arguing over the definitions. And under the interpretation section, it says, "If, if the definition is not clearly noted in your code, you can use such things as the dictionary." I, I think the supplemental section, since it's included in the definition of agriculture needs to be considered, I keep coming back to that definition of customary. And if I pull out my Merriam-Webster dictionary, customary is commonly practiced, used, or observed, and then, or based on established by custom or customary laws. And agriculture is the art, science, or practicing of cultivating the soil, producing crops, and raising livestock in varying degree of preparation and marketing of resulting products. Cultivating the soil, do I consider this a soil cultivating agriculture operation, or do I consider this a factory that produces a product, and the product just happens to be, in this case, leafy greens? But it could be widgets, it could be boxes, it could be-
Well, hydroponics in the definition is, is, is what else?
But, but, but our code doesn't, doesn't address the hydroponics. And this isn't just the greenhouses. There's, I think it was 75,000 square feet of, of processing facility in addition. So, so I'm growing it, but then I've got a factory, and I've got a loading dock, and I've got the 40 truckloads that are going to come in per day. There's a lot of definition that the board needs to take into account. What was the intent of the code? The, the large lot was added to the code after we moved to Webster, and for the reasons to protect a section of town that was fairly undeveloped, that didn't have the, the infrastructure.
Actually, I was on the-
Because I was, I was R3 when I bought my property, and then it changed.
The main reason the board established large lot, which, which I did not agree to, by my, was because it was an area that was not easily sewed. And that was, that's the whole reason. Because the following master plan, they expanded the large lot area to include the northern portion, which you reside in.
Right.
Wedding road. And that just butchers zoning. Because it's so difficult to revert back to anything in the future, once you establish that large parcel. And people that reside there down the, in the future, they're going to want to sell portions of their property, which doesn't permit it.
Right.
I mean, town of, Menon went through that a number of years ago, about 15 years ago. They had five acres, and the town board was petitioned to allow smaller parcels off theirs, off their five-acre parcels.
Well, part of that was with the evolution of EPA, the DEC, septic systems fell out of favor. So, areas, like you said, that were not easily sewed, the large lots would ensure that the septic system-
That's right.
Plenty far apart. To do half-acre lots with septic systems was just unacceptable.
Then we have-
And I found it concurpelling. I can't, we're not sewers here. But I think that, that was the, and actually, the town board has the option, if you, if a builder could provide sewers in an area, the town board could take it up.
Well, that was the carrot in the initial ordinance, but then it was removed because there was such a, oh, determination to stop development.
That was another, that was another fad we went through.
The phase stop order.
Yeah, we've been through a lot.
So, they removed that carrot where the town board had the option, if sewers were able to service that area- So they removed that carrot where the town board had the option, if sewers were able to service that area, they could revert back to, I believe it was R2 zone.
So I may just add from Ms. Vulo's comments that, you know, you have to make a determination before you just simply adopt 22573F. As expansively as you indicated, you have to make a determination that that is part and parcel of the definition that's contained in 220, in the large lot definition. Because it appears as though, based upon when that was written and the language, the context that it set forth, and that that might not be an automatic thing to do. It says customary agricultural operations or farming may be conducted in all zones, which is significantly different than the context of the permitted use under the large lot section. One could argue that by looking at that, it's allowing the qualifier customary, which is undefined, but intentionally doing that in areas where it wasn't previously permitted.
So that would allow agricultural in a commercial or an industrial or an outdoor storage area where it might not be specifically listed as an allowable use? I don't have my code book in front of me.
I think the difficulty is that in the timeframe and the manner and the location where they put that language, it seems as though it would be a reasonable inference to say, if they wanted to qualify agricultural uses in the large lot area, they would have done so.
But yet they refer to that in the actual definition of agriculture.
Well, they bracket it in terms of another location where agriculture is defined, but it's in the context of in all zones.
And it was a significant distinction.
I think the chronology, this helped a lot. It happened in 2014. The large lot zoning was written long before that. So this was added.
1996, I think?
I think that's important to know that this was an...
2003? 93.
Yeah, it was in the 90s.
Because my wife wanted to move to Whiting Road for a long time and it basically said, no, absolutely not, because if the Hale and Gosnell property goes on the market, it could end up being, we'll have seven acres of land and we're staring at an R3...
600 houses across the street.
Development across the street. So when in 93 that all changed, you know, it said, okay, fine, then we're protected.
You know, the other issue is, there's a natural tendency to start talking about intent, which the board is only allowed to do when it's ambiguous. When it's not ambiguous, it has to be given its strictest definition. And it's challenging, obviously, as we've all determined, under the large lot, when it just says agricultural uses, period, there's not much ambiguity there.
But do we ignore the preamble that says that, looking for the low percentage of impervious area, where this is just paved?
The preamble certainly, at best, doesn't carry anywhere near the rate, the weight, I should say, as the actual definitions of the statutes that we're charged with interpreting.
So the intent of that zoning section does not...
Well, I think it helps if something was ambiguous and we were looking for intent and it was right in front of us in the preamble, that would be a nice tool to have. But we're not interpreting the preamble, we're interpreting the statute. And then the other part that's troubling about that, Ms. Vulo, is when you look at the language, it seems to be based upon residential development, which I think this clearly is not. And I grant you that it is odd that the preamble is based on that, but then the statute goes on to talk about a lot of uses other than residential uses. But it's the statute that's controlling, not the preamble. Unless it's ambiguous and it talks about what the intent of the drafters were, then we could certainly use that. But the law requires strict construction in favor of the property owner.
Well, this, your counsel's invaluable because we don't know these things. We deal with setbacks for the most part. I want my fence closer to the line, I want my shed closer to the line. This is a lot deeper. And I don't think I've ever read this code book so much as I have in the past week. And I read it over and over and over. But your insights about what the law allows is important. This is a legal issue.
Yeah, it is, it is. And so let me read from a secondary source that is a source of authority in zoning issues. It indicates zoning ordinances fall within the class of enactments, which are peculiarly difficult to draft. They restrict the use of land in area of conduct, which was notably free of restraint prior to the enactment of the zoning regulation. Their major impact is upon rights and land, which enjoy the highest degree of protection under the common law and the federal and state constitutions. Strict construction of such ordinances must be anticipated. Regulations which restrict the use of land must be drafted with special care in the selection of language and meticulous attention to the definition of terms. Absent such careful draftsmanship, the objectives of zoning ordinance may be lost in the process of strict construction. The Court of Appeals, which is the highest court in the state, has held that zoning regulations are in derogation of the common law and must be strictly construed in favor of the property owner. Now, I'm not saying that because, you know, I have any belief one way or the other, but it's hard to work around the large lot language when it says agricultural uses are permitted use and it includes greenhouses and the growing of vegetables. That's difficult to work around. I also struggle with the language in, was it 73? Because... I know one of the residents that called in about the use of the word "of" in 22573D. But again, plain reading, it appears as though this subdivision D is addressing single dwelling units. All zoning provisions and restrictions as to single dwelling units of our residential district, R3, shall apply. So again, it appears to be maybe an oversimplification, but the fact is there are no proposed single family dwellings in this application. So how is it that we get into that section?
Well, the whole section deals with dimensional requirements, more or less. Establishing five acres, a lot width of 250 feet, making a determination of, you know, what a front setback is or a side setback is. And then you get to see, and they deal with, you know, farm labor and hands and family that's engaged in working the farm and establishing housing for them on the property. And the very next section establishes, again, my opinion, as I stated before, that there will be some land that is associated with any single family homes that were built on the farm. My personal feeling is the intent was that if there was a situation like that, it would be done aesthetically pleasing, rather than have little shannies for migrant workers.
That's the way I saw it. When I first read it, that's the way I interpreted it.
You know, there again, it's just my interpretation. I mean, even you get down to D, any farm buildings used for residential purposes. Whole thing deals in trying to establish dimensional requirements, more or less, for migrant workers, farm labor.
See, and I read it differently because, you know, I'd just like to argue.
No problem.
That A, B, and C are defining setbacks and, you know, the size of lot, if I do put a residence on there for any of the workers of the farm. And anywhere, anything that is not defined by A, B, and C, those provisions apply from the single dwelling unit section of R3. So when I go to R3, it says dimensional regulations as follows. All right, it's already defined the lot size, so that wouldn't count, non-residential two acres, so I don't use that. But then I go to number two and for R3, the maximum lot coverage is 20%. The minimum lot is 100 feet. Well, yes, but it's larger for the agricultural uses, it has to be at least 200 feet. So where it's not specified here, then it falls back to what's listed in R3. And if I went back and, I don't have R2 in front of me, but... So what it's saying is anything that's not defined, R3 applies. And that's where I think we can't discount the lot coverage. Even as an agricultural use, which is allowed, you still have to have some restriction. Otherwise pave the whole thing.
I don't want to keep hopping back and forth here, but we've gone from the use and what's customary agricultural back to the R3 designation in section D. I'm still looking at the large lot, sorry, I'm not keeping up.
It's okay.
I'm still looking at the large lot residential agricultural uses and there's been an assertion that agricultural uses aren't defined or aren't well-defined. But then we've got 22573, section F, where it says customary agricultural operations or farming may be conducted in all zones. So I don't know if we can take section F and say that that is a definition of agricultural uses in 22512, section 6. I'm having, I'm trying to understand because, you know, by a strict flow chart of this whole thing, if you can take it one way and say, okay, agricultural uses are never defined and so therefore agricultural uses include greenhouses and we're building greenhouses, but then you get to section F and I see nothing in 22512 that excludes section F. It's not as though it's just part of, well, if you're in an R3 zone, then section F applies. It says conducted in all zones. So does section F apply to all zones, which means large lot residential? And then we're back to what's customary. Is that a question you're asking of the or... Well, it's a point of discussion that I'd like to hear other people's opinions on because, you know, we've heard...
Well, I guess what carries more weight? The definition that's written in 2253 or what's written in the 22573F? Because there's a definition of agricultural uses or use in 2253.
What to say, John?
I think we're hung up on the word customary.
Yes, that's the whole thing. I think we ought to agree it could have been written better initially.
Yeah, well, as John just read to us, that the codes need to be written carefully so we don't have these issues. So, but this was written way after the large lot zoning was established. So I think this was not meant to alter, this is my opinion.
When you say this, you're referring to 73.
Yeah, it was written long after it. So if this wasn't meant to alter the previous code, I think this was meant to amend and add more uses to more zones. You follow my logic? It doesn't specifically say this changes what was previously allowed in the other residential zones. This went to allow farming and industrial and commercial.
Well, if that was the intent, but there's no particular preamble to this.
It doesn't tell me that.
And so I could look at it as saying, okay, well, we've got this definition up there, you know, in 2253. Now we're going to elaborate on it a little bit more. You know, and so, I mean, again, it becomes a matter of interpretation, Crook, so...
You were going to say something as well?
Well, because Article 9 was added to the code after the R3 and the large lot definitions were added to the code, I look at that as being a more precise definition or a more restrictive definition.
No, more of all?
Yes, here's what I initially put in the code and then here's my refinement of it. So I've given more definition and more interpretation than originally. And so this applies to all districts based on whether you're doing a kennel or a bed and breakfast or an agricultural use or whatever section it applies.
And Barry, to your point, if you read the 2253 definition of agricultural use, it goes through use of land, buildings, yah, 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 you know, greenhouse products. But then at the end of that definition, in parentheses, it says C-section 225-73, which would cause me to think, okay, we're going to now look at 22573 for a more elaborate definition here that's been added after the fact. So in fact, I think that F applies.
And to me, because it says C-section 223, I interpret that as being included in the definition now. Here's added information that now goes in the definition.
Why wouldn't the drafters, if that was their intent, placed the word customary in the most significant part of the code? Where agricultural use would apply? Because they just intended 22573 as a footnote to that, to, okay, if you're going to look at the definition of agricultural use, also go back and see this. We're not going to bring it all and rewrite that statement.
It's the same, in Bed and Breakfast, it does something similar where it says it meets the requirements of section 22569, which is also a section of the Article 9. So it pulls that further definition in without repeating it in two different places.
Which is actually ISO 90,000. You don't want to repeat the same thing over and over again because you might miss it.
Right, when you edit one, you miss something.
When you go back and edit one, you miss something else. That's why we don't have our drawings out on the website and also in the design engineering folder because every time it means we've got to... folder, because every time it means we've got to go out and edit multiple places.
You have, there's a timeframe when customary was added to, to 25-73.
It appears to be around 2010.
Around 2010. So prior to that, I would argue that agricultural projects, there wasn't a need for customary because agricultural projects for, for four or five generations were a tractor, a barn, a plow, things that grew in the soil. I mean, for, agriculture was agricultural, farming was farming. I mean, it wasn't until recently, I would say 2010 would be a, a good, a good timeframe, where there had to be a distinction between what a farm was and what a farm was becoming.
Yeah, because you did.
I can tell you, I can tell you with 100% certainty that the, that the framework of, of what a farm was, the people that, that defined what a farm was or agricultural was, never, never imagined what I see, those greenhouses north of 104. Never, never considered that as an option. I asked Don about, you know, a definition of a greenhouse for, for a reason. I mean, for, for, forever, I mean, our lifetime, we saw a greenhouse, we, we knew a greenhouse had the same dimensions and pretty much what you see on Whitting Road is what, what you saw in greenhouses.
Typical greenhouse.
So 2010, 10 years later, I mean, when was that constructed? Three years ago? 2016, 2017?
2017, 18.
That, that.
On 104.
On 104, by the, by the windmill.
The rail.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
I can tell you that the, the people who, at the time, that, that, that this was written, a farm was a farm, agriculture was agricultural. They never envisioned or, or even considered the prospect of a, of a, of a project like, like that 104 project. Now, is that why they put customary into the, into the equation? I don't know. I didn't write this, but that might be a reason why.
Well, to, to an extent, too, it, the, the whole thing with communications towers was added into the code after a fairly large brouhaha over the idea of putting a 300-foot cellphone tower down at the sewer treatment plant, which.
Actually, it was the highway department.
Oh, was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, but it, it was, you know, that, that meeting lasted till four in the morning and essentially got turned down by the zoning board because it was, well, I'd have to even review the minutes, even though I did the regression analysis on their home property, you know, the claims that it wasn't going to impact the property values. But then, at that point, the town board started to try and get out in front of these things more aggressively, proactively. And so at that point, they looked at the agricultural use, and all of a sudden you've got factory farming of chickens, factory farming of hogs, you know, very, very large dairy barns that are, would almost cover the whole town complex. And they said, no, we've, this is not a, a customary agricultural use.
I think it's a, it can look at this a little different if, if there was a farm and you built a house, and then you complained about the, the stink of, because the farmer was, was tilling fertilizer, because that farm was there and you built your house. You, I mean, farming, they've, they've always done that. In this case here, they built their houses, and now they're, they're, they're bringing in a development that arguably, I mean, you could, you gotta argue the, the definition of what, they're calling it agricultural. For the, for the true sense of the word, they might be, they might be right, they might be wrong. Because there's, there's soil, there's, I mean, hydroponics is, it's no tilling, there's no tilling of the land, they're buil-, they're building an enclosure for it, it's year-round, which I don't think would be custom, well.
Well, and not even tilling the land that.
Farming, right, you're wrong.
The, the nutritional topsoil that is the value of the farm is going to be stripped away and removed from the site, and then there's going to be concrete and pavement put over it.
Well, you, you, I think the, the board's getting way far afield here, right? So we're not before the planning board, right? Agricultural use is defined in 225. It's not ambiguous. It says greenhouses.
Yes, but then it also says C, 225-73.
That, we're gonna get to that, all right? Now, when you go to 73, so we all agree, there's no, there's no ambiguity with the greenhouses in the definition at 225-3. We have, is there any debate on that issue?
No.
Okay. Let's, let's go to the next section, which is 225-73. So the first thing here is that you have to, the board would have to believe that this 225-73 is additional wording to define agricultural use.
Well, when it says C that section.
Let, let me finish that, but that's not the statute, okay? It says customary agricultural operations or farming may be conducted in all zones. So the last part, may be conducted in all zones. That doesn't have much to do with the definition of agricultural use. That's a qualifier, right? Talks about this type of operation, that being a customary type, can be conducted in all zones. It's entirely different than an expansion of the definition. It's a qualifier of where other agricultural operations that are customary can be conducted. So my advice to the board is, think carefully about 225-73 before you determine that that is really an expansion of the definition in 225-3. Because if it were to be, I don't know why it would say conducted in all zones. That suggests to me that it's not.
That, that would suggest to me that it means that this definition or modifier to 225-3's definition applies to large lot R three, R one, R two, the whole kit and kaboodle.
Why would it need to say that, though? For what purpose? Wherever agricultural use is used, you have the definition right here. No other definition says that, you know, boarding of horses is applicable wherever you can board horses. There's a reason why that's there.
I think one of the things, most of us are lifelong residents of town, and a lot of times, we let our personal opinions get in the way of what we're trying to decide because that's human beings, that's what we do. But what we have here is a legal issue in front of us.
Mm-hmm.
And if we don't make the right decision from a legal standpoint, it's going to be challenged yet again. So in other words, we have to put our personal preferences aside, read the code for what it is, and try to be objective. And that's tough to do, that's tough to do because we all have, we all have our own personal biases, but we gotta do our best to be objective.
But that's why I brought up Occam's razor. If you take the absolute simplest, then it basically says agricultural use includes greenhouses, this is a greenhouse, it's permitted in a large lot zone, and.
It, it's not, though, if you take the simplest, though. The requirement is that you have to strictly construe the words that are there.
Mm-hmm.
Well.
Not a question of simple, but a question of strict construction. Okay. I guess I would interpret simple as being strict construction.
Okay, well, yeah, that's.
Because you're not, you're not adding anything to those words, so it's.
Now, the law gives you the right to do that if it's ambiguous. Then we start getting into intent and interpretation.
Right.
We're charged with strict interpretation if it's clear. That's why I said it's, it's, it's a difficult argument when you're in the large lot and it says agricultural uses, agricultural uses is defined as greenhouses, you know, they take the extra step. I, I think the attorneys for the company include the letter from the Agricultural and Markets from the state of New York, talks about this company anticipating the construction of seven greenhouses. The agricultural markets law defines farm operations as the land and on-farm buildings, equipment, processing, handling facilities, and practices which contribute to the production, preparation, and marketing of crops. I think, you know, I think there's a lot of ambiguity in that portion. I think the, the closer call of ambiguity and grayness is the second part of the equation, which is, which is the R three language.
And that's so ambiguous that it's very difficult to figure out.
Well, I think we, I think we have some differences in opinion, which is good.
No, I mean, I mean.
I take, I take no exception to somebody else's opinion. I'm just looking the, you know, the way that was written. I wish it was clearer. I think all board members and training staff wish it was clearer, too, but unfortunately, nothing's black and white.
So, state again, you feel that it applies to the residential units or the entire code for R three? What's your thought?
My opinion, I think it's, was the residential units because of.
As to the residence itself, but not?
For, for the, for the tenants from labor, so, because the, they wanted to make sure that if there was, were any homes that were constructed for labor, that they were aesthetically pleasing. That's why they wanted to establish setbacks for those homes from the road right away.
That's the way I read it initially, and then I started to second-guess myself.
Well, you, you can, you can.
Yeah.
But, um.
I mean, you could, you could look at it from both ways. I mean, Ms. Volo's way also. I mean, if it's not there, then you go there and you go to R three zone and utilize what the dimensional requirements for within the R three.
So, so what, what, what you're saying, let me see if I can paraphrase a little bit, is you've got all of these definitions in, or discussion in C that you can build additional residences on a single tax code.
Part of it.
Being that being the farm, and that's allowed, but they can never be split off, and beyond that, those residences have to conform to the R three district.
The, the area, yeah.
Which is what D, D basically says.
Right.
Is, okay, we're gonna make some exceptions in C.
Right.
And then D basically brings all of R three into that for those residences, which to Ms. Volo's point, you'd almost wish that they had said, okay, yeah.
Compliance, R three requirement.
Section A.
Well, you know, that says that they can be sold off, but they have to be minimum five-acre lots.
Right.
So that maintains the integrity of the farms. In other words, you might have one farm that's 100 acres, but if you build the houses far enough apart, you might someday have five smaller farms.
Which is kind, which is against R three zoning altogether because, well, I believe back when this was written, R three zoning required 18,000 square feet, now it's 22,000 square feet. Who's on first, who's on second?
Yeah, yeah, when they ever tried to reduce the density of the town, they, they upped all the square footages of lots.
Said another way, whether or not D expands beyond single-family dwellings.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Right.
Mm-hmm. But, you know, and again, there, strict construction, they could be argued, is apparent on its face, but, you know, clearly, an argument could be made that it's not. So, you know, is it ambiguous or isn't it?
That's the air force, John.
Well, you know, that's an interesting, I'm, I'm clearly not a voter, and I'm not here to influence votes, I'm just in, I'm here to make sure that as you discuss this, that you're discussing it with, with, within the framework that you're legally supposed to be.
Right.
So I, if, if it sounds as though I've got a dog in the fight, or I'm leaning one way or the other, please don't interpret it as.
No, I, I'm listening to what you say, and the way you're phrasing it, I understand exactly what you're trying to convey to this board. I, I, I understand that. I mean, but, but at the same time, you're not giving us an answer.
Does that sound like that?
That I think we're looking for because maybe there isn't one. I mean.
Well, we're gonna have to make a decision one way or the other. I think Mr. DeMarco's purpose here is to keep us on track, give us the legal perspective as to what, because this is a, it's a legal issue, not, we're not, it's not a variance, I'm asking for a variance, it's a legal, you know, determination as to whether or not this is allowed use and lot coverage is acceptable, you know, that's what they're looking for.
Hypothetical situation.
And he's just, he's just, like he said, we're not the planning board, he's trying to keep us in balance here to focus on what we need to decide.
So if, if, if we determine, if we determine that this was not allowable.
Not allowed use, is that what you're saying?
Allowed use. Two things could happen, right? The, we could, we could have legal action against us, or the town board would actually have to add another provision to what is used and clarify something that is, that is not customary farming or agricultural. And I don't even know what you call it because.
We're charged with making a determination as the law currently stands tonight with the application that's before us. Although it may be interesting to discuss what happens if we decide one way or the other, it is really of no moment.
Yeah, we have no idea what the town board would do.
Hypothetical.
We have to focus on what we have to do, and our job is big enough, all right?
We have to make sure our decision isn't arbitrary, capricious, that it's based upon facts that are in the record.
Has everybody had enough for tonight?
I think so.
Okay, so, I guess what we do is, obviously, we all need time to think and reflect on what we've heard. What we do is just table further discussion, public portion of meetings closed, so further discussion will be amongst board members anyways. So everybody, you got two weeks to think about it.
Let me just admonish everybody a little bit. Well, first and foremost, before I do that, the public hearing is closed, proofs are closed, this now lies in the board's hands only, and it's important that, you know, there not be any subgroups or discussions with each other until you all reassemble here and we're in the public and open meeting posture. I would also say that, in fairness to both of the parties, our decision should be made based upon what is in the record, the papers that we've received, it would be unfair to either party to interact with other interested parties that didn't present or speak at this meeting, similar to, you know, what we would ask of a jury, is to decide the case based upon what we hear here in this room and the controlling statutes. Because I think the temptation would be to solicit other opinions or listen to neighbors that drops things off at your front porch, et cetera, and we shouldn't be doing that. And if we were to do that, I think it would then only be fair to open the hearing back up to the parties in the public.
Understood?
Understood.
Agreed.
All right, so, I made a motion to table this discussion till the next meeting. Do I have a second?
And Aaron, may I say it?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. So, with respect to the agenda, right now, we have an agenda, correct? For the 23rd?
23rd.
Okay, so, in the event that any of the parties want to be here, what makes the most sense to put this at the beginning of the short agenda?
Beginning.
Pardon?
I would say beginning.
Beginning?
Sure.
It's just a continuation of this meeting. That's my opinion.
I don't have a problem with that.
So with that, I don't know, with respect to staff, does that mean you calendar the other matters for eight o'clock, or how are you?
And then there is a significant break until the next meeting at the end of July. So, I mean, we can reach out to applicants and see if we can rearrange some things.
Well, could I suggest that we, we do have, I don't want to take 60 days, I don't want this on my mind for 60 days, but we could start to deal with it first thing next meeting, and if it seems like it's gonna go on and on and on, we could table it again. We have to, why don't we do that? And, you know, maybe our ideas will kind of come together by the next meeting, we'll see. After we, I don't know, what do you think, John, you think that makes sense?
I know one of the matters that is on for the next meeting is going to be...
Contempt.
Right, and lengthy, so, and we've got, what, two or three matters in addition to that?
Words.
So you're talking about not getting to this matter or not getting to those other matters, and you got to figure at least a couple hours.
Would we have two table items from this agenda?
We have two, two from the previous agenda.
What, Ridge Road?
Ridge Road and the car wash, use variance, which we have extra material that we'd need to get in order to hear the use variance.
Can I?
I...
This may be way out of bounds and of no interest to the board, but what would the possibility be if we picked a date next week other than a scheduled date to handle this matter exclusively? Does anyone have any interest in that?
I don't think we can do that without publishing it appropriately.
We can't do it.
Right.
Like I said, it may have been way out of bounds.
Well, actually, it's a good advice, was often to schedule it, to schedule it would be difficult.
It would have to be published and noticed.
Yeah, they have to publish it. Okay, well, that, you know what? This isn't the place to discuss that right now. We'll check with Karen and see when things could be done, maybe we could pick up another interim meeting, that might be the way to go. That might be the way, good suggestion. I want to thank everybody, thanks for all, thanks especially to John Farrow's legal counsel, thank you for the applicants and their presentations, and thank everybody for their patience, and you all have a good evening, and we'll see you on the 23rd, right? 23rd. That's...